All right, well, welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. The Hamilton Partnership is hosting these events, trying to just get in touch with all the businesses, wanting to make sure that everybody, you know, as we're reopening and, you know, kind of in this new normal, having all the information that is relative out there and, you know, as possible, as much as possible, getting the word out there of what, you know, needs to be happening to get everybody safe. And also to make sure that any questions that come up, that, you know, you know that there is a open communication, line of communication to the township, to the partnership, however you need to get to these questions answered, making sure that, you know, we're there as a resource for you as well. So I'm just gonna... Fire and safety just came on too, I think. There we go. So thanks for joining. So I see Kelly Rick and Loretta's on. Deb Runyon is from Customers Bank. Kelly, where are you from?
I'm from Brookwood Cafe on Quaker Ridge Road, right across from Dunkin' Donuts.
That's what we thought. Kate and I tried to come have lunch last Monday, but you guys weren't open yet, so, or Tuesday.
We're open Wednesday. We closed on Monday and Tuesday, just because it's not working as well as we would like on those days.
Yeah, we came over and your husband was trying to put up the tent, so we'll have to come back and have, try to have lunch again, so.
We'd love to see you.
Wonderful. Thanks for joining. And then we also have some other people that are joining as well. We also have Lori, do you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, you're on mute. Good morning. Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Good morning, Lori Danko. On the behalf of my business, Dan Moore Mechanical, and also the Hamilton Township Economic Development Advisory Commission.
Okay, thanks so much. And Marilyn Silverman?
Marilyn Silverman, Work Center Printing, I'm here to make sure that we're doing everything right as a retail business.
Okay. And then we just had Brian Duff join. Brian, do you want to introduce yourself?
Hey, good morning. I'm a lawyer over at Calabro's, Mamula Hartman and Lento, KMHL, right off of Five Points intersection. I have a number of clients at the restaurant and, you know, food industry that I just wanted to kind of keep abreast to what the township's doing and make sure I can keep them up to date.
That's perfect. Thanks so much for joining. Wonderful. So I'm just gonna say it again, just because I think some, a couple people came on after. We are recording this, so if there is anybody that wants to see it afterwards, we'll post it to our website. We're gonna post it to HamiltonStrong.com and then also to HamiltonPartnership.com. So if any of your clients or any of you want to see it afterwards, we can do that. You can look at it, look for it there. So with that, I'm gonna introduce also Chris Helwig, who is also here. Do you want to introduce yourself? Sorry, Chris.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Chris Helwig. I am the health officer here for the township of Hamilton, and I oversee the Division of Health.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. All right, I think everybody else is speaking, so I'm just gonna hand it over to the mayor and have him just do a nice welcome and say hi. Oh, we can't hear you again, mayor. It's muted. Oh, no. This happened before. No.
Does it show your end, Rachel?
No, it's not. It happened to him before. He's gonna go out and come back in again. I think it's the connection in the township office today. I apologize.
We're all having issues.
Yeah, I know. And it's just his sound. It's so weird. But as soon as he comes back in, he can talk, so we'll do it that way.
Okay, I think we hear you, mayor.
No. Oh, my goodness, no. No. Oh, hold up, sign.
He calls in on his phone.
Yeah, can you call in on your phone, Jeff? Okay. All right, in the meantime, I just wanted to give a heads up. We're gonna be doing these again tomorrow, is focusing on retail businesses. And honestly, I mean, anybody can join. These are gonna be small enough meetings, so if somebody missed today, that they can definitely join tomorrow, you know, and we can get questions, you know, back to the appropriate people if they're not on. But we have tomorrow retail, on Thursday, we have professional services, so, you know, legal offices and, you know, more office kind of spaces, insurance companies, you know, that kind of thing. And then the one next Monday is gonna be on personal services, so hair, nail, massage, that kind of thing. Gonna let Kelly back in, somehow she got kicked off too. Sorry. There we go. So we'll have those coming in the next couple of days as well. And like I said, we'll be recording them. And as soon as we get the mayor back, I think. Maybe not.
Have him, I have them checking on his audio downstairs too, on top of it.
All right. Is Fred there, Kate? Or, I can't, he was making a phone call. Or do you wanna get started before the mayor comes back on? I don't wanna waste anybody's time.
Yeah, Fred's here.
Yep. Are you there, Fred?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yep, absolutely. There we go. So the mayor was having audio problems, so do you want to get ahead and get started, Fred? And just kind of give an overview of what's been happening and what businesses need to be aware of as they reopen?
Well, I have the mayor's notes in front of me, but it says what a great job Fred Dumont's doing, and he deserves a raise. I had to say that before he got on. Well, Rachel, thank you for hosting this.
I think he just got, hold on, is that him?
Take a time.
I'm here. Good morning.
Fred had your notes. He was just saying how wonderful Fred Dumont is. That's what you're supposed to be saying right now.
Yeah, that was my line after "good morning."
Exactly. All right.
Rachel, you want me to go then?
Yeah, I think that's good. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, good morning, everybody, and sorry for the technical difficulties. I do want to say, as I'm sure Fred was starting to say, what a fantastic job Fred and his team have done through all of this, as well as Kathy Fitzgerald and her team, which includes Chris Helwig, who you see on the video, and Kate Kane is part of Fred's team as well. Especially Chris joined us in the middle of April from Irvington, where he was health officer, and jumped in with both feet and really got going. So he's done a phenomenal job, and both those teams are to be commended for all the hard work that they've put into all of this. And for the hard work that they keep having to do, because just yesterday, luckily, we got the word, as everybody else did, that indoor dining can start at 25% capacity on July. So with that will come some, I'm sure, additional guidance from the state and from our local health department too, on what to expect, if anything different, in terms of indoor dining. But just to show you how far ahead of everything we were, Chris and his team, as part of the Division of Health, had put together guidance for our local restaurants that probably matched to about 95% of what the state put out. So it just shows you how ahead of the ball they were in anticipating what the state was gonna mandate. And Fred and his team were already getting plans together for people for outdoor dining space well before the governor's announcement, so that everybody knew where they could put the seats, how many they could put, and things like that. So that's why I and many others, come last Monday, were able to go to eat right away outside, enjoy the beautiful weather that was last week, and really help our restaurants now get back on their feet. I know many of them have been able to kind of tread water now for a while, doing the curbside delivery, curbside pickup and the delivery, but now get back to what they do best in serving Hamilton's residents and businesses. So again, just wanted to say kudos to them. So in terms of what we can expect now moving forward, obviously, I'll let Chris talk about that from the health perspective, Fred and Kate to talk about that from the business perspective. But we also, as a township, are trying to use some of the CDBG monies that we were awarded, especially for businesses in low and moderate income areas of town, or who employ a significant amount of low and moderate income employees, to get back on their feet. And we're partnering with the partnership to do some of that. We know a lot of our banks and other businesses have been involved in PPP loans and EDA loans and all that kind of stuff. So we're here to really help make sure people weather this storm and come out of this as strong as they can, and hopefully even stronger, and maybe even picking up new revenue streams now with better curbside delivery and things like that for well into the future. So I've got about 15 more minutes, and then I've gotta jump off, but I want to make sure everybody else gets an opportunity to speak, because they have far more better information than I do. I just wanted to make sure I thank our team here and thank all the restaurants for really, I know the last three months has been difficult, but hopefully you all see a light at the end of the tunnel.
Great. Thanks so much, mayor. And Fred, is Fred still on? There we go.
I am.
There we go. Do you want to talk about some of the accommodations and regulations that the township has instituted, not instituted, instituted for dining? And then some of the ways that you're working with some organizations to, or some of the companies to, some of the businesses to, you know, get them back up and running and successful?
Sure. Thank you, Rach. And listen, the mayor's, he often gives out complimentary remarks to his staff, but as we all know, leadership and success starts at the top. And the mayor, he sets the agenda, he motivates his people, he gets the credit for all this. And this outdoor dining's been an incredible success. If you ride out at nights by Blend, by Rossi's, you know, or going to morning by Kelly Rick's place, and you'll see that people are out and they needed this. They need this now to get out of their houses and to feel more or less liberated. And we wanted to get ahead of this, because we knew our restaurants needed some other source of income. So that was our number one focus, is to get people open. Now, two, our second stage is to promote our businesses, and the mayor mentioned some CDBG monies, and the partnership has some of that, and our other businesses. So we're putting a plan together where we promote our businesses, let everybody know who's open, and encourage our residents to get out, and hopefully track residents from other towns, people from Ewing, Allentown. You know, we have an awful lot of restaurants, and 45 of our restaurants are opening up outdoor dining this week, so that's great. But I also want to talk about the future. Where do we go from here? So we do not have, until, oh, excuse me, until last week, we did not have an outdoor dining resolution. So we put together, and council was great about adopting, a temporary ordinance for outdoor dining. But I want to announce that in September, we're gonna have a meeting where we invite all restaurant owners to get together, and we listen to you. You're the professionals. You tell us what you need to have a permanent outside dining ordinance, because Bill's Old Time Tavern, Fred Pete's, and places like that have mentioned to me they want to put permanent facilities in. So if we start the dialogue in September, we listen to you, you tell us what you need, we put it into form of an ordinance, get our council to work with us, and then we can be ready, starting in December or January, we can start applying for permits. So next April, we're ready to go with some permanent structures out there. So that's our plans, what we need to do. As far as what we've done and what we need from restaurants, I'll allow Chris to talk about the health part of it, because that's his expertise. But on the zoning ended in our resolution to council, and they made an ordinance, that we're here to work with our businesses. So while we do have some definite things in place for the zoning, we also have the ability to condition it to your physical structures. So that's why we've gone out and visited so many places where we've offered suggestions. And I want to congratulate my engineering department. We're doing an incredible job of working with people, but we're gonna tailor each temporary application to your physical limitations. And I think we've done that. Kelly's on here. You know, we worked with her to use a portion of her parking lot. Peter Rosati from Chickenella's wanted to put something in the parking lot. We adapted it to now he's got a great outdoor dining on his porch, and one after the other. So message is clear. We're here to help. All right, any way we can help. You make a call to us, you send an email to us, we will be there that day to work with you. But only together, if we get together and work on this, will we all succeed. So that's my message, Rach, and I'll be here for the whole time for any questions.
Thanks, Fred. What about, I'm just, I don't know if you can address this, or Kate, but, you know, what about tenants who don't own the buildings where they are, you know, who are having, you know, have you been talking to landlords or, you know, these building owners about any accommodations for the business owners? Or how is that working?
Well, I've had to talk to a number of landlords. Ironically, today I have to go out and talk to a tenant, because the owner is the restaurant, and there's an issue there, so we're gonna work that out there today. But I found all the landlords have been cooperative. You've known me a long time, that my willingness to work with people cannot be interpreted as a sign of weakness, because I do have a, I think, what does Robin call it, a difficult side? But, you know, everybody's been great. Everybody has worked together, and I think that's the key here. And, you know, some people didn't understand and said, you know, landlords say, "I gotta pay my taxes, so you have to pay your rent." And then they say, "I can't pay my rent, because I don't have any customers." So it's a dialogue. Joe Jones has been a unique challenge. Joe is an entertaining individual. And, you know, I've had to be out there five times, and the mayor's heard every conversation by just opening up his window. That's how loud me and Joe have had conversations. But they worked out. They go out there, he'll tell you that he cannot be any more thankful for to help the township into it.
Good. Awesome. Thank you so much. So Chris, can we have you just talk about, a little bit about the changes or, you know, updates with anything with the health department and how you're working with the restaurants as they transition to outside?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. And I want to just, my director, Kathy Fitzgerald, just joined us as well, and she's the director of the department that we're a part of, Health, Rec, Senior and Veteran Services. So I just want to acknowledge her, and it's been great working underneath her as well, and it's been awesome with Fred and his team and the mayor, and the kind words that they've both said, you know, it's definitely felt here as well. As far as the health side, we really just want to be the place where all of our restaurants and even any other business that they have health-related questions, that they can come to us, and we can really be that technical assistance as they navigate some of the guidance documents that the state puts out, because we know that the state can put out some kind of convoluted and also last-minute guidance documents, so we can help point people in the right direction of, just go to CDC or other resources that the state might be basing their guidance documents on, and that we can give our also kind of what we're thinking or what we're seeing kind of guidance to any businesses as well. Additionally, we are putting out our own, and we have put out our own guidance documents to restaurants and to other businesses that we oversee, such as pools, camps, obviously restaurants, you know, animals, vets, things like that as well. And additionally, we've also brought on board additional contact tracers. So if businesses or restaurants, you know, do have somebody who does test positive, you know, within their staff, or if they have maybe a resident that had visited their, you know, location of their business, you know, we can provide that support and really talk me through what the next steps are and what steps that they need to take. So it's really, you know, we really want to be this, you know, resource for all the residents and all the businesses here in the township, so that way they can have somebody local to ask these questions to, instead of, you know, trying to get ahold of somebody at the state, which can be very, very hard.
What recommendations are you giving to restaurants in terms of contact tracing? I mean, I went into Brothers the other night for dinner, and they took my name and my phone number. I guess that was it, my name and my phone number. And then how many people were with me? So, I mean, is there any information that is required that the restaurants be taking from the people that are coming in and sitting, as opposed to just doing takeout, or is that a recommendation? How is that, how does that work?
It is a recommendation at this point. I would say that it's something that we definitely highly recommend, that all restaurants, especially for sit-down service, I think that it's really important. You know, especially, you know, even if you're only a cash-only business, and you're not getting those credit card receipts that way, we can't really, then there's no way of us going back and trying to find somebody who might have had, you know, an exposure there. It's really important just to have at least a phone number, a first name, and maybe initials. If people are uncomfortable, you know, getting like the bare minimum is like, all right, can you, we please have like a contact phone number and initials, or contact phone number and a first name, or even, you know, an address, if they don't have a cell phone number. That way, if we need to mail them something or go and visit them at their home, that we can get in touch with them as well. I don't think, I don't want it to be a barrier for people to go and enjoy restaurants and enjoy the businesses here in town, but I think it's just really important to follow that recommendation and get as much of that contact info as possible, especially for sit-down service.
Yeah, Pascal just actually reminded me with the table number that I was sitting at. So that was the other piece of information that they're getting, so they can actually, and, you know, online reservations, I would assume, would help with that, because you're kind of gathering that information in general. So that's another suggestion for restaurants to take those online, you know, people are constantly putting their name and their phone number and, you know, information in when they, when they go online. So which is kind of a, another way to contact everybody if something does happen. Thank you so much.
Can I just make a quick interjection about the online reservation? Just a piece of information. So we looked at doing the online reservations. Note, it's over $100 a month to sign up. It can go from $100 to $500 a month to sign up for like online reservations. So I just want to throw that information out there. Just keep that in the back of your brain. It's not as easy as it seems.
Kelly, can you speak for a second about the cost for some of those delivery services?
So we, first of all, a good thing to note is that credit card companies have almost doubled their fees. So before, it used to be when you wipe a credit card, it was one and a half percent for like Visa and MasterCard, and then like a little bit more for Amex now, because you have to push in the numbers, because you're doing a telephone call. They've now doubled that almost. It's up to 3%, in some cases 4%, 5%, when you take a phone credit card. Grubhub and DoorDash, Food delivered, they have all, they have all increased their fees to like astronomical amounts. It was seven and a half percent, I believe, I can't remember even what I sent you, Fred, a while ago, but it was like seven and a half percent on both ends, like as the restaurant owner and as the purchaser of an item to have it delivered. And we just, it was just a ridiculous amount of money to, not only if I, if they pay by credit card, now I'm losing up to 3% to 5%, then seven and a half percent if they order by Grubhub or DoorDash. It was just too much money. Now, even our toast system, like our POS system, has tried to work with us, but now we have to pay a fee to do online ordering. So it's $150 a month for online ordering. Now, we're looking at doing online reservations. That's another $100 to $500 a month, depending on how we work it out, to integrate it with our POS system. It's just not feasible, because we're still working on a negative amount here. We're not really making any, we're just staying afloat. So, and including 20% increase in cost and a 75% different turn. It's, just keep that in mind when you, when you go to restaurants like us, and we're taking it on paper, I'm storing it. But it's very difficult to.
Just to ask a question, so we can get this message out to people, you know, what is the best way? Pick up the phone and call for an order, like for you, or for anybody in general? Just so that we can help get that message out, that it's supporting the business a little bit better.
Like for us, we've already forked out the money to like do an online ordering system. But, and we have to take the 5% hit on a credit card order, because we're working on a skeleton staff, and we don't have time to run out there, grab a credit card, come back in, take it back out. I mean, and a lot of people are afraid to pay cash, but in all honesty, people look like, when we have to pay out, some people think like, oh, we're gonna pocket the cash, but really, they look at how much you buy in supplies, so there's no way to like really hide that money, because if you're buying $1,000 of food every week, they know how much you're selling. So there's really no way to really, like, I heard from one customer, he's like, "I don't like to pay cash, because I know they hide it." And I'm like, I get that, but there's really, in today's day and age, there's no really way to hide that. You know, they look at the supplies that you buy, and, you know, it's, you know, they're gonna know. It's definitely apparent if you're hiding all your cash. You know what I mean?
Antonio has his hand up, and Pascal wanted to say something. I probably, they probably want to say the same thing, I would imagine. Is that right?
I just wanted to say, Kelly's absolutely right about the added fees when it comes to online, with like DoorDash, Grubhub and all that. For online reservations, if some of your online ordering apps offer that as an option for free, or like if you have my online ordering, for example, and online reservations, I pay $30. I use Wix, so I integrated Wix with our system. I don't pay anything extra for the online reservation. So it's a lot easier. That's saying there are other options. They may take a little bit. Go ahead.
I tried to use open table. An open table was.
Expensive, so expensive. We would end up paying them $1,000 a month, at least, by the time we're done seating, you know, all these customers, and their upfront fees and all this other stuff. I, trust me, I was with you. So Wix is our online system that we take online orders from. They do take a little bit more time to set up. If you don't have it, we luckily set up like four years ago. And then when it opened up, you know, I fortunately was like, okay, how do I navigate through table setups and table reservations? Yes, it was a little difficult in the beginning, but now that I figured out the process, it's cost-effective, at the least. Maybe it wasn't convenient in the beginning, but, you know, we had the two weeks or whatever it was to figure it out prior to, which is appreciative, because sometimes it would make a change in the rules, and they're like, okay, it's three days. So in three days, it's hard to implement. We had at least in two weeks to figure it out through Wix. And our online reservations gives us our phone number, email the client, and what table? We assign tables to people, almost as if you joined a yoga class. Actually use that, that system of the online process. So every table becomes a class, say, at least, and they're labeled like two-top, four-top, six-to-eight-top. I mean, you can go to our website, brotherspizza33.com, and go to patio reservations and pick a date and time, and you'll be able to navigate through and see how it works. But every other system is extremely expensive. I mean, it wasn't even feasible for us to pay that kind of money, considering our ticket, like our average ticket to Pizzeria, we don't serve alcohol. So people aren't realizing, like, I don't serve alcohol. My average ticket's $30, $32, $35. I can't pay open table this much, or Grubhub, and all, you know, it just adds up and adds up and adds up. At the end of the day, people ask, "Oh, you're doing great. You have a line," or this, and I'm like, a line is artificial demand. There's people standing outside, because they're lined up in their car, because we weren't letting them in. So there's only 10 cars out there, not 100.
Now, I have a quick question for you. So one thing I noticed, so I was talking to a couple of my friends' own restaurants in Virginia, Florida. They're doing only reservations for an hour.
Yeah, I do an hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
So ours is an hour and a half. I book out two hours, which may be a little too long, but on the flip side, I don't overwhelm my staff, and I don't have to have too many servers on. So we do an hour and a half reservation. When you book a table for 6 o'clock, it books till 7:30, and it'll tell you when you book your reservation online, it's an hour and a half. And then our Wix allows me to give a buffer time, so my buffer time is, so I tell my customers an hour and a half. I really note on the Wix site, an hour and 40 minutes and buffer time 20 minutes. So every reservation blocks out a table for two hours.
Can I talk to you a little bit more about that later?
Sure. I mean, I gave.
What's your best?
609. I don't care. So there's everyone on here is fine.
And I wanted to start a concierge shop, where we like did kind of like what they did in Hoboken, and we locked in a price fix for DoorDash and. And we locked in a, a price fix for DoorDash and, and Uber Eats and everything where they can't charge these astronomical fees. Like I wanted to almost have us in Hamilton really block out and limit the amount of fees that they're allowed to charge us to charge restaurant owners and customers. I don't know if anyone else would be interested in that, but I, I was kind of hoping maybe we could head in that direction in the future.
I'm interested in getting rid of Grubhub as soon as possible. I'm, I'm not gonna use them honestly. Once it's over, most likely. Or I'll limit their hours because I find that Grubhub's poor service. We're not getting drivers on time. People are complaining about a lot of issues.
Review.
And I get the bad review. So I've, I've been having much, much better success with DoorDash overall in Hamilton. I don't know if it's the amount of people they have driving or not. But overall, we were just having this conversation last, or two nights ago, like we gotta get rid of Grubhub as soon as possible or figure out a way to kind of weed them out slowly. I don't have their link on my site, just I have a DoorDash link because when I signed up with DoorDash two years ago, we, we still don't really deliver. Now we do limited and for catering. But DoorDash gave us a better rate because we're, did not deliver ourselves.
Right.
So we had to negotiate that in, but they gave us a better rate. So I don't pay thirty percent with DoorDash. But I also appreciate the better service we're getting with DoorDash. Like we have a better, their, their iPad system works better there. As a whole, their system is more efficient and for us, in our setting, in our opinion, than Grubhub. I mean, and to have multiple iPads sitting on your pizza counter is just a pain. Like it's not easy. You have, now I didn't need the extra person taking it or on the phone, but I have the extra person managing screens. It's, it gets to be hectic.
And have, has anyone had the woman come to your restaurant who's from this Facebook site trying to question you on your health practices?
We did, I don't know anyone specific. I had one lady come in, literally, I think it was Saturday morning. She questioned if her pizza was correct. And we, we haven't let anyone in the pizzeria until this week. So we turned the box around facing her. My uncle had his gloves and mask up, up. Pulled the pizza box open. She started bugging out. Close my pizza box, whatever. So we closed the box. And then she walked up to the counter where the guy's answering the phone and his mask is pulled down while he's on the phone. And then she started yelling that he didn't have his mask on. And we're like, listen, he's on the phone. We're not doing face-to-face contact at all. You walked up to us. You know, there's, you're not supposed to be there. It's an older woman. I don't know who she was and we literally just, she was like wrapped in everything.
There's a woman in Hamilton's associated with the Hamilton Shelter. She's blonde, she's mid-fifties. She's doing some type of Facebook survey thing where she's asking, she'll start out asking you about how you're managing dining. A little, and then she gradually progresses into more specific questions such as, do you take pictures of your server, do you, does your kitchen staff wear gloves, wear masks? Then she started asking other questions and so, and then she goes ahead and rates you on a website. So, so just be very, very careful about, and, and alert your staff that it's coming. She's hitting every restaurant in Hamilton.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. Thank you so much. Antonio, you have your hand up and I know you got kicked off and came back on again. I apologize.
Yeah, my kids keep hitting my earpiece and it keeps turning me off apparently. I should say like regarding the online ordering and table reservations, we didn't have anything from Blend because ninety-nine percent of our stuff died in before this all happened. So I went on and did a bunch of research and Gloria Food is something that integrates really well.
Say that again?
It's called Gloriafood.com. And it was practically free. Like I think I paid thirty dollars a month because I added features that you don't need. But it allows you to take online ordering and table reservations for free. You pay a little extra and it's a flat fee, not a percentage if you want to accept payments through them. But you could put in your own payments and not pay any extra. Or you don't even have to accept payments online. You can say, receive cash at counter. But you still get all the information online for table reservations and online ordering. So there, so there's a lot of like easy benefits and it's practically free. And if you know how to do it, it completely integrates where you don't know that you're going to Gloria Food. You're just going to blendbar.com and ordering table reservations. There are some features that aren't as like bells and whistles, but they all, they do offer way more sufficient stuff in need be like, you know, like my, for my table reservations, for instance, you just see every table once. Like as a reservation comes in, we have to accept it on an iPad or a phone. That has to be dedicated and you can't just like keep the app closed behind your screen or something like that. But, um, once we seat all our tables once, if a new round of reservations come in, we just tell them they have to be out by seven-thirty, which is next reservation, or then come and wait until the table leaves. And we find that when people are waiting, people get a lot quicker. So we haven't had any problems with that. We've been pretty busy this past week.
Our biggest problem is integration with our POS. So we're just trying to figure all that out.
So I won't necessarily integrate with your POS, but what happens is it'll print to a printer. If you, if I mean, if you buy a printer, if you want, but it'll print. What we did before we bought additional printer is we literally got the online order through the tablet and then I had my service for the first two weeks, pipe it into the computer. So it was all integrated. And that's the easiest way to integrate for it. So it would, you would receive the order and then you would put the order in your POS system. And now all your sales are one recording system. All your sales are one recording system. And that truly is the easiest way to do it.
Cool. Thanks.
Hey guys, I just wanted to jump in for a second because Rachel and I have had a number of discussions about this. We need a restaurant association here in Hamilton. We do. I would talk to Rachel about possibly a partner with her organization because, you know, we have a lot of common goals here. And I think you people all have expertise in many areas and can share them, can lower your costs, raise your profits and make this better for our town. So we're gonna have conversations about that, but you're gonna hear me, you know, constantly pushing that idea that we need, we need more voices telling us you're professionals. We don't know how to run restaurants and we don't want to make regulations that are over restrictive against us. So it's an important entity and I need you to look into it.
Yeah, I think there had been one in the past. I know someone mentioned it last week to me again. So it is on the, on the docket of something to, to consider to put back together again. I think it's, it's important. I mean, we have enough. We, you know, all love to eat. So it's something I think would be really good to, to be able to, you know, have everybody talk and, I mean, yes, it's competition, but at the same time, you know, there's plenty of people to go around and a lot of business that people want to support. So I think it would be awesome.
Rachel, it's Lori. About five years ago, we tried to do it in com- combination with economic development and the restaurant owners and it just, participation was halting them. Everybody's got to get on board because it is surely needed.
Right. I'm gonna introduce Kate Kane because she works in the Economic Development Department. She's the Deputy Director of Economic Development and wanted to give a little bit of an update. She works directly with Fred in that department and had an update. I wanted to introduce her.
Thank you. So, you know, we have a couple of different layers, right? So we have, you know, as a township, we're helping you get up and running from a zoning aspect, from a health aspect. And then, you know, we're really here to help from a, drive more traffic to your businesses. So, you know, we really are looking at this from all angles, you know, and that's where we can kind of collaborate together and, you know, what's working, what's not. If you are looking to get introduced to, you know, more chamber organizations, Shop Hamilton, Hamilton Partnership, which I know so many of you are, are a part of, you know, this is how we can do that. So really getting the word out, you know, now that you have outside dining, getting the word out to your customers is, is really important. So, Hamilton Partnership has started a HamiltonStrong.com website that allows you to put on, you're on there, your updated hours, what you're offering. And I think it's really important that you have some sort of online presence that's really gonna get the word out. There's other ones, Rally for Restaurants, Jersey Bites. So it doesn't just continue to just being, you know, hitting your Hamilton residents. It could expand further to, to that. I know the restaurants that are on here have, have applied and are approved for outdoor dining. But others that are on here, I know there's some commission members. You know, if you know of other restaurants, they're thinking about it, are considering it. You know, as of right now, we have forty-five that are approved for outside dining. That is fantastic. We have about two hundred and twenty-four eateries and restaurants in Hamilton. You know, and that includes your Dunkin' Donuts and, you know, other, you know, other eateries. But, you know, certainly if you, if you know someone to think about it, have them give us a call. Like Fred said, we'll, we'll send somebody. Whether it's an engineer, a zoning, myself, Fred, and come out and look at the space because there's no reason why, you know, everybody can't be thinking about it. It's gonna drive more business to you. You know, we want to be there to, to help with that. And I think that was a big reason for getting this open discussion together. And the questions that have come from Kelly and Antonio Pascal, you know, this is really what we wanted to see happen. It's that you have common challenges and common questions that we can all help or put our brains together and think about a solution. Or what's working for you? Share that, you know, it's about being collaborative right now. So that was really the, the goal behind all of these. Today is restaurant, but there are some retail. I know Marilyn is on here, you know, Brian, you know, a lawyer. It's, it's about just coming together. You're, you're all welcome to be on any one of these calls this week. And Rachel and I have been kind of promoting that. While today's tailoring to the restaurants, you know, tomorrow's retail, professional services, and then personal care. I think we can all gain some insight and then also offer some advice to others. So that was really where I wanted to go with that. You know, wanted to start by, you know, maybe asking anybody to share what other things have been working? How have you, you've been successful in reaching your customers that maybe you want to share and, and give that insight to others? Honey, I know Rachel, you're doing like a hand raise, right? Or?
Yeah, yeah, or anybody can jump in. There's not that many of us on here.
Marilyn.
Go ahead, Marilyn. Yeah.
About temperature checks. Is that something that's recommended, required? We have not been doing, we've been open all along because we're actually, besides being a retailer, we're also a manufacturer. So we'd have the door locked up until about a week and a half ago and then we had to see who you were before we let you in and you had to wear a mask. And now we've got our face, our, our shield in place at the counter. But we haven't been doing the whole temperature check thing. That's something that recommended? Chris, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Chris to jump in.
That's a good question. For manufacturing, I don't think for normal retail businesses that it's required, especially for customers. You know, because we all have gone to the grocery store and gone to, you know, Target, you know, Walmart, whatever, and you're not temperature checked. I think it is important that all businesses are monitoring their staff. I mean, that's really the most important thing. And it can just be a simple question, or a couple of questions of, do you have a fever or have you felt feverish in the last twenty-four to forty-eight hours? You know, do you have any, do you feel ill? Or are you, is somebody ill at your home? Or has somebody that you live with been told that they need to isolate or quarantine? Because if they're living with somebody who's sick, then that employee should also be excluded from work and should be returning home as well. And that's, I think, just those couple of questions. And it can just be, and just keeping track of it too. If you do want to go temperature tracking for your staff, just write it down, you know, date, who the employee is, what their temperature was. Or, and the same thing for the questions and just keeping a running log. And that way, you know, if somebody does get sick, you can kind of go back and, you know, see who was on the shift that day, you know, who might have had close contact with someone. So what we do is we try to identify who is a close contact, meaning they've been with, within six feet of somebody for more than ten minutes. So if your workplace is spread out and people really aren't having that prolonged close contact, then the risk is gonna be lower. But if it's something that people working side by side, having a lot of close contact, then it does put people at higher risk. But to answer your question, no, there's no requirement. It's recommended. And I would, you know, it's definitely for staff. You know, just do a daily check-in health-wise.
Chris, I have a quick question about that. Isn't that a violation of the HIPAA law to ask your employees for their temperature?
No, because it would be, and, and I will say, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. So if you do have specific legal concerns, I would, you know, contact, you know, a law firm or, you know, some sort of counsel. But, you know, since we are under a state of emergency and a public health emergency here in New Jersey, it does, and give us some more protection in regards to personal health information. Granted, you can't turn around and then, you know, publish, you know, online, you know, all your employees' names and all of your, and all of their temperatures. And that's something that I would say maybe you as the business owner, or if you have, I don't know, if, you know, if you have one person who's gonna be in charge of keeping that information and making sure that it gets locked up or eventually, you know, down the road destroyed, it just can't be shared. But you as a business owner, you know, should be able to, you know, you know, require that of your staff. And you also have the guidance and the executive directors and executive orders from the state that also give you that protection.
Okay.
Yeah. So just don't share it widely and you'll be fine.
We just, we just developed a form for one of our restaurant customers for his staff. He's got twenty-five part-time staff people. And this is going to track their temperature. Did they feel ill? Same question to just ask, but, but the employee has to check it off daily so that he can, he can monitor that. And a temperature check.
That's great. And I think it is important that the employee does it themselves. That way they're also taking that responsibility of stating, yes, I do not have these, rather than somebody else like just going off, yep, 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 you're fine. And then in reality, the person's sick. You know, even with, in normal times, you know, especially for restaurants, you know, if an employee is sick, they, they should be excluded from work, period. And you know, with, you know, the pandemic going on, everything, it's even more important to, you know, and not be like, oh, well, you only have two of the five symptoms. You're, you're fine for work. It's just easier that, sorry, you're sick? Go home and let us know when you feel better and wait that, you know, seventy-two hours after symptoms resolve to let them come back.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Any other questions or things to share that have been working well or Marilyn, even things that you have been, you know, producing for, for restaurants specifically, anything?
We've done a lot of floor graphics for the six-foot social distancing. They come on the floor and then they lift up without any residue. So they're really nice. We've done the same thing for walls. And in the back area where the staff is, a lot of concern for staff. Little signs on the walls that say mask up, just as a reminder, keep your mask on even when you're in the back because you're around the other staff. Lots of signs for outdoors. Where's the entrance? Where's the exit? Exit only. They've got, you know, directing people not coming and going next to each other. The entrance on one side, the exit on the other side. Washing your hands, bathroom signs. And, what else? We've just been doing, and outdoor flags, you know, now open for outdoor dining. We just got that yesterday. So, signs, signs, signs.
Great. Brian, I don't want to put you on the spot, but any questions that you've kind of gotten from any of your clients that, you know, would be helpful or things that have been, you know, an issue that you've seen with some of clients?
A number of the questions have revolved around what Kelly's question was earlier. Things related to striking a balance between employees' privacy interests and their, their personal health information and the fact that we do have a public health emergency. So we, we have received some, some questions in that regard in advance of, of the towns and county and state governments permitting the restaurants to perhaps do, do some of their activities outside of the actual internal dimensions of their, their facility. There had been some questions from, from clients about what may be permitted. And, you know, obviously that's, that's municipality-specific. Those, those have been some of the significant ones. Some of those other questions involve when you do have, have clients who either, Um, some of those other questions involve when you do have, have clients who either are landlords or tenants and um those are questions that lawyers and pretty much no one else can answer, which are, well, how do I pay my rent when I'm closed? Or, you know, I still owe my bank loan to the bank. How, you know, and I still have to pay my taxes to, to Hamilton or any other municipality? What am I supposed to do? And, and those aren't, those aren't questions that have easy answers. Um, I, I've typically counseled, generally speaking, that certainly as to landlords and tenants that um uh these are typically um entities with whom you've had some degree of, of a lengthy relationship. And, and this, this is going to be something that passes and the ones that kind of work with each other and stick with each other are going to be the ones who are going to be able to, to not only like endure it, but to flourish coming out of it. And so I've, I've taken not just a purely long order type of uh tack uh in trying to answer some of those questions. I, you know, our job, boy, they're not as lawyers, is, is really to attempt to, to resolve disputes or to help clients avoid disputes before they, they arise. And so um, I, I have found that a lot of the inquiries I've received and the responses to the inquiries I've had to ever see from you know, diverse clients have really required me to just strike a balance between, well, here's what the law permits you to do. Um, but you need to take a practical approach to, to some of the different um you know, challenges that are confronting you. And that, that's, that's typically what I've been trying to do. I, I, I know it's probably not a great answer, but, but that's probably the best answer. You know, I, I can provide um to your question.
No, that's great. Do you, uh, where are you? Are you in practice by yourself or are you with a firm? Just if people want to be able to contact you?
Sure, sure. Actually, as a matter of fact, I'm, I'm a partner at uh KMHL, um, right off of um Five Points. And as a matter of fact, the Hamilton Strong, uh, we, I, I don't know how I got on the list, but I received an email about how I learned about this. And we, you know, and, and yeah, I actually did our ad yesterday just because I thought it'd be great as like a, a local business directory. And so we did put something on there yesterday. Whoever did the approval, I appreciate that. Um. Uh, we do, we represent a broad section of, of local businesses, not, not certainly just the industry. And uh we do try and take an approach of uh, you know, being practical about how you, you address the different challenges that, that confront you in your business.
Great.
Hey Rach, I have to get off. I've got a meeting with the mayor.
Yep, tell him you said hi.
Hear my comments before I got on, um, because he wants dinner now. But I still have to deliver one message that the, here we're very consistent. Support our local restaurants. My message to the local restaurants is support our local uh retail. And if you're going to renovate, you're going to build, support our local contractors. Only if we lift all of us up can we succeed. So thank you again for doing this, Rach. I'm gonna sign off.
No problem. We'll see you tomorrow. Thanks, Fred.
All right. Goodbye. I might be fishing tomorrow morning. I'm not too sure. So we'll see what the mayor says now. All right?
All right. Thanks. See ya.
Any other um questions out there, um, challenges that maybe um, has anybody had or maybe things that are, are working really well? Um, just a note, um, brothers, I know Rachel mentioned it earlier, taking the name and the email address and the phone number for contract tracing. It, it gave a sense of uh peace of mind as a, as a customer. So, you know, while it's a recommendation, I know coming from the state or the health department, you know, it did really um give me as a customer, and I think, you know, something to be said, you know, for other restaurants. You know, doing that due diligence um really does set a nice tone for your consumer as they sit there. Um, so, you know, wanted to commend you only because I, I was there and I, I witnessed it happening. So with, with, with Rachel.
That's great. Well, I, I want to, go ahead, go ahead, Kelly.
Um, what are the next steps in moving forward with the opening for twenty-five percent? Like, will we have another inspection? What can we expect? Who do we contact? What, what's the plan?
So as it just came out yesterday, um, I know we'll be working really closely with the health department. But Chris, do you have any initial information that you can provide to uh our restaurants?
Uh, sadly, I don't have any new information other than what was announced publicly. Um, hopefully the state is proactive and gets this information out uh as soon as possible. Um, I would just make sure that where everyone's familiar with the outdoor guiding rules and then also probably take a look at what the requirements are for, you know, retail, regular retail businesses. Uh, just to kind of see, you know, what is required for when people are inside. I would imagine that, you know, again, it's going to be universal masking. So all staff are going to, you know, continue to have to, you know, wear masks, you know, wear gloves. And all patrons will need to continue to wear masks um up until the point that they're actually sitting at the table. So at any other point, then they will need to um, you know, wear a mask other than when they're at the table with their group. And uh again, six feet apart with tables. And I think that's about it. We'll see what they come up with. But I don't think it's going to be anything above and beyond what we're already seeing um with the other guidance that's out there. But um uh, so I would just take a look at what's out there and, and that should give you a good idea. I don't think that they're going to make, I would be very surprised if there's going to be a ton of hoops, additional hoops that people are going to have to, to jump through. But as far as an additional inspection, um, as long as you have your current um, you know, annual inspection report from us, you should be fine. And then, you know, we'll work with economic development as we do with outdoor dining uh to see how we move forward. If we're gonna, you know, just amend um, you know, the current application, if we're not going to do anything, you know, we'll, we'll work with um, economic development to figure that out.
Antonio had his hand up. Yeah, go ahead, Antonio.
Uh, two questions. One, probably more for health. Another one, I'm not sure who would answer. Is there a specific guidelines on when gloves are needed, when not um, like at a table but not handling anything, like if they're just taking an order versus bringing food out? Or is it anytime they're doing anything, gloves are supposed to be worn? Um, and my other question is, is there a hard time of closure regarding temporary seating, permanent seating, indoor seating?
Um, we're not, there isn't a hard time for temporary seating. I, but I'm gonna double check um as the executive orders just keep coming out uh fluently from the governor's office. So I will double check. We'll put that in um some sort of email or confirmation so that everybody's aware of it. Rachel, do you have um any knowledge up top of your head?
No, I don't think that there's anything. I know that there was local ordinances, you know, about closing eight o'clock, but that was, you know, way back at the beginning. Um, but I don't.
I know it helped permits at midnight, but then other permits from the state said eleven PM. So I didn't know if that was something that's, you know, suggestive or
Yeah.
how enforced it is. Like I know previously you can't even have an, or, or after two AM.
Right.
Very. You know, that's a hard strict number. You could serve until one fifty-nine as long as they walk out door, what that is on paper nowadays.
Right.
And how it's changing with the combination of indoor and outdoor dining.
Mm-hmm. Let me, uh, yeah, well, and also I'll touch base with the ABC too. Just, I mean, just making sure that we have the same number and it's consistent on everything as far as for our outdoor dining. So.
And then the gloves, yeah.
Um, yeah, so as far as the gloves go, they are required when any employee, and I'm just gonna read right from the executive order. Um, it's require all masks, are all employees to wear face covering except when due, so it inhibit the individual's health. And require employees to wear gloves when in contact with customers and when handling prepared foods or serving foods, utensils and that, and any other items to customers. So I would um say that if they are just seating or taking um uh, taking orders, then gloves would be required.
Okay. All right. Well, it is ten oh five. Um, I want to thank everybody for getting on and for participating. Um, like I said, we did record it, so we'll publish it on the websites. Um, probably in the next couple of days and then um put out a, another report or another uh notification that they're up there. And then if anybody is interested, you know, tomorrow we'll talk to retail and then professional services and then Monday with um personal care and anybody is welcome to go on to Hamilton-dash-strong.com and register. So um encourage other businesses to do so. We also um encourage you to register like Brian did on our Hamilton-dash-strong.com. It was literally created um out of an idea to try to have residents understand what's open. Um, in the middle of this pandemic, it was just, you know, which restaurants are open? How can we get a list and, and a concise list of, of, of um, you know, open businesses? So those registrations you control as the business owner. So you can go in every day, change your specials, change your pictures, change your openings and times and, and you know, whatever you need to do. Um, and we will be pushing it out and promoting it to the residents um here in Hamilton. So thank you so much for being involved and um we'll see you tomorrow, see some of you tomorrow, but um other businesses again. Thanks so much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.